Good evening ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight for our town hall meeting. And we're going to begin, as we begin all things with prayer, so if you could join me for a moment. And take a deep breath and remember that we are always in the holy presence of God. And let us begin in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Good and gracious God, we thank you for this day, for our loving St. Francis community, and for parents, teachers, alumni, and leaders who care about the future of St. Francis. We thank you for this Advent season and the gift of your Blessed Mother. We ask your blessings on tonight's meeting, that you would open our hearts and minds to new ideas, to creativity, and a can do spirit. Help us to create a school environment that reflects your love and mercy, and the spirit of hospitality, and help us to become the people you're calling us to be. And as we are on the cusp of the Feast of the Immaculate Conception and the Feast of Our Lady of Wabuwe, let us ask our Blessed Mother's intercession as we pray. Hail Mary.
For grace, for blessing, for food.
Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the children of Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now in the hour of our death, amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the very proud president here at St. Francis Catholic High School. And we are on the cusp of some really exciting things. The next couple of years will bring us some new facilities hopefully. And I want to thank you for being here tonight and for sharing your feedback about the things that we are going to share with you tonight. I want to thank those families who are joining us on the live feed tonight. If you have questions or comments that you would like to share, please email them at masterplan@stfrancishs.org and we will get to your questions and comments later on in this presentation. I have the privilege now of introducing our architectural team, Steve Habib and Tam McCooch. This is their second time visiting St. Francis Catholic High School. They came back and talked to you about their process. I had the privilege of meeting them a couple of years ago in Boston, when I was at a conference, and they just wowed me, and they continued to wow me with their process, with their communication, their interaction with our community. And I'm really, really honored to be working with them, and I'm sure you'll agree with me when we're done tonight. So, without further ado, I present to you Steve and Tam. Thank you.
Well, thank you Teresa. We're going to start off with something fun, just to have us getting the mood for thinking about the future, thinking about the possibilities, thinking about the potential, seeing what is out there in the world of education. So, if you just open your minds, open your hearts, and take a peek. Tam? So, there's a little bit about what the future holds. That technology exists today, but we're not proposing that we necessarily incorporate all that. But we're just wanting to open our minds, think a little bit about the potential that's out there, and the potential for sacredness, which is already great, can improve, can grow.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We are off and ready. Last time we were here, the slide said, "Here we go." And that was in August, early September. We have done a lot since then. We want to share with you what that is briefly. We're going to talk about us, what we've been doing. We're going to go over the surveys that you took, the conclusions that we've come up with, the master plan options that we've developed to date. And we'll literally look at those and talk about the pros and cons, and then what's next. So, about Habib's associates, like Teresa said, we met them in Boston in early September. This team was onsite, Stephen, myself, along with Jack, our educational planner, and Mike and Eric, our architectural team. And we scoured the buildings, all of the spaces, and also spoke with many, many individuals onsite. And while we were here, so prior to coming here, we conducted a survey. And that was a very open-ended survey that went to the faculty and staff, to the executive team, and to the strategic visioning team, and also the board of directors. It was a wide-open survey, open-ended questions. Tons of information came in, and from those, we fine-tuned the questions that went out and to the visioning activities that were conducted when we got here onsite in September. We had four meetings similar to this one when we were onsite. We met with each department chair and had one-on-one discussions. And we met with the leadership class and gathered more and more data. We also conducted a space needs assessment. All the spaces you need for your classes that are desired, and for the activities that are desired. Mike and Eric, our two, the technical team, architectural team, went through every building as far as the facility condition, top to bottom, inside and out. We looked at every inch of your campus and spoke with a lot of individuals. We then took all of that and created the surveys that you were a part of. We did the alumni survey, we did the family survey. So, how many here are with the families? And alumni? It is. It's a good mix. And thank you all very much for coming and taking the time to do this. Your input is really valuable to this master plan and process. And thank you to those of you who are here with us online. So, from all of that, we've drawn conclusions. We've determined what the major issues are and put together the master plan options. One of the activities that was conducted while we're onsite was a visioning activity. These nine items were determined to be priorities. The executive staff, the strategic visioning team, and the faculty and staff all engaged in the visioning activity where they had $100 to spend. Each of these items had its own bay, as you see in that picture here, and they put their money in. So, this is the scores of what was the priority, what were the priorities of that activity. And the numbers on the top show the number of individuals that found that one item to be the very most important item. So, you'll see the chapel had the most votes for what is the most important item, although the money was spread around realizing that all of those areas, or many of these areas, are very important. This same question was asked of you. On the left, you'll see the family survey, and on the right is the alumni survey. The results are very similar, with a few exceptions. The teacher workspace and meeting area is lower of priority, which makes sense for this group than it does for the group that's onsite, that are here every day. Safety and security is in the forefront of everyone's mind. However, this group here, this room tonight, ranked it higher on the priority list. But that does not mean, as you'll see in this chart... I'm sorry. I looked it ahead. I'll show you the chart where safety and security, individuals are felt very safe and secure onsite. So, when we met with the leadership class, we did visioning activities with them. There was 40-some students, and they developed items that were important to them as far as classrooms, which you'll see here. And these will be incorporated into the details of the plan. But it got them really excited about it and thinking about the master plan and what it means. And they also did the same thing for the campus. And they had a long list of items that were important to them.
And it was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun. It was. We asked the two groups in here tonight, what's the one most important thing for St. Francis to focus on? And you'll see, there's a little bit of a difference between the two groups, a difference. And the sense of community on the alumni, that was a sense of community as far as the structure of the campus. And please, at any time, if anybody has any questions or comments as you're looking at this, I'm going through these rather quickly, but we have a lot to get to and we want to make sure that we can do so in an hour and a half. Yes?
How many alumni were surveyed versus how many families were surveyed?
There were 6,500 surveys that went out for the alumni, and 921 responded, which is an great number. There were 950-some of family, and 336, I believe it was. So, really good number responded. Yes?
Are athletics still done on JFAS campus?
Yes.
However, they have 44,000 or 120,000, so there's a 220.
Okay. This is the slide I wanted to show you. Students are safe and secure when at St. Francis, yes. You combined strongly agree and agree. But it is foremost in people's minds, however, when on campus, students are safe. What is the most important attribute? We have similar results here as well, although it changes as the alumni get out into the real world. The priorities change. This is very telling for St. Francis and something I think you can be proud of. The academic program, how does it compare to other academic facilities? And better, obviously, very high scores. And that's the family version of the survey. And the alumni survey, did the academic program compare you for your future? Strongly agree. That's wonderful. And it's a good reminder of why we're here tonight, to keep this rolling, to keep this tradition alive, and to keep St. Francis headed in the right direction, as it has been, and into the future. Thoughts on extracurricular courses to be offered? Life skills, maybe cooking, cleaning, things we're not doing so well? Ranked in order of importance, the alumni also thought life skills were high. What else in the other areas too? So, this is kind of fun, with these favorite spaces on campus. You know, I tried to find a picture of the old cafeteria because I don't know what that looked like. And so, I put a picture of the new cafeteria for anyone who hasn't seen it or online livestream. This first one on the family survey, parking and traffic flow. No surprises? All right, so then we have favorite space. You really do have a gem in Sarah's card. You absolutely do. It's a special place. That's a few. There's one special place, spaces here on your site.
Can you go back one slide? So, wait, so why is the courtyard so low in the family? What's the difference between courtyard and Sarah's court? Yeah, okay, well, I'm just confused. Where's the courtyard and where's Sarah's court?
New sales at Great Grand happening every morning. Who only finds that?
It should have been Sarah's court. Okay. What additional athletics would you like to see onsite on campus? From my understanding, athletics has been spoken about for a few years. Traffic field. Any thoughts, Sarah? Surprises?
Why is softball on the list?
Why is it on the list? Because the question is what additional athletic activities are we currently having?
Maybe somebody didn't realize.
It's important that St. Francis campus continue to reflect history, character, and character. Obviously. Okay. So, our conclusions, and some of them are obvious, but going through this process really shows that there's a lot of individuals, there's a lot of thought, all on the same page. Fine-tuning that is what we'll be doing and working through. The preferred student population is probably 1,100 students, which it is now. That is the number that the options are designed around. Have any of you been to Covetown? Couple people. You may have scored higher on this item in the survey if you'd have been there. It's a priority, teacher workspace and collaborative space, spaces to have private conversations with students, to make telephone calls to parents, that type of thing. Classrooms are a priority. The temporary classrooms have exhausted their lifespan. It's time for them to go.
How many years has that been around?
It's 2004.
Too long.
The chapel needs to be improved, expanded, renovated in some manner, some fashion. There are areas that are underutilized, the armory, fitness center, some portions of the whole St. Francis, older St. Francis building. Clarify what you mean by the St. Francis building, because most people think it's just the admin offices. But, okay, it is not. It's anything but the admin offices in that building. The rec room, the maintenance storage, and guidance. That's a picture of Covetown, where the faculty have their space at Covetown. Additional... Sorry, is there a question? After having the individual conversations onsite, it was determined that a black box theater is highly desired, as is a yoga studio.
What's a black box theater, sorry?
What is it? It's a space where you can do theater in the round. You can set it up in any different type of configuration. There's been quite a number of performances that the school has tried to do, but it's been tricky trying to set up on the stage.
Like when they did the last production on the stage, where they had the seats all around, that would be taking the full theater and turning it into a black box, without actually having a black box. Generally, a black box would be this room, all black. So, you could have seats all around, seats on this side, seats on both ends, however you want to configure it based on the production you would like.
The theater's fairly new, so are you talking about redoing the full theater?
No. No. Generally, a black box is in addition to a proscenium theater. So, you have a proscenium that we have plus a black box, which would be much smaller. Sacramento Theater has one that's about 88 seats. So, it's very small, very intimate usually. Generally, the biggest I've seen is about 100 seats.
It's a more intimate venue.
It's a flexible space.
Very flexible.
That allows lighting from anywhere in the space and pointing any way you need it.
So, these are the priorities that came up with the conclusion? So, anime second, theater, when we have one, yet we have zero other things? Is that correct, or?
Well, we haven't gone through them all, and we haven't seen the whole program.
Yeah. I'm sorry, can we go back one slide? I'm kind of confused. I saw a survey, and the survey said that the Aquatic Center was a big concern, but it's not on this list.
We're not done with the lesson. We just got started with the black box. It was confusing, which, to some people, exactly what we meant by a black box theater. Yeah, maybe we should...
So, onsite sports are preferred?
And these are not in order of importance. This is just a compilation of the items that we found from the surveys, from the meetings, from the discussions, as things that the school community wanted.
Several buildings need updating. And based on the space needs assessment, the existing buildings are not large enough to house everything that's desired currently. And then additional conclusions that came from your responses. Parking and traffic flow, a big item. Safety is a concern. Sarah's court will be enhanced, but will always maintain to be there. And maintaining ethnic identity and focusing on the whole student. Now, that leads us up to looking at the options themselves. So, these are just some food for thought prior to viewing the options.
So, there are, there's a reason for the sequence. We're going to show you the options, three options that we've developed today. And all of the options will allow the educational programs to be conducted throughout the campus. And there are elements within the options that can be mixed and matched and can be adjusted. And maybe items on particular options that you feel would be good on other options. And those are things that we're going to, we're going to talk about that tonight. So...
This is, I thought was a beautiful quote, a wonderful quote. Start reviewing what's necessary. There are some things that are definitely necessary.
We're going to go through all three options initially. There'll be videos. And I'm going to ask you to just hold your thoughts and comments until we get all three, get through all three. Then we're going to go back and do them individually. And at the end of the first one, we'll take comments. We're going to talk about what you see is positive about a particular option and what you feel is a drawback. We're going to record those on the sheets that you see up on the wall. We're going to just discuss them in more depth and really get to understand what's behind them.
In addition to the pros and cons, also other ideas that you may have, comments, thoughts, considerations. So, here we go with option one.
So, is this one positive?
Now with what you have in your hand.
Well, this first option would involve initially moving the modular classrooms to a different location to make room for the construction of a two-story classroom building. Then the modules could go away. And you'll notice some activity up here, and that is to... And you'll notice some activity up here, and that is to relocate or to create some maintenance space, maintenance offices and storage, and then reconfiguration of the parking lot. And then we have the addition of a promenade to link the main campus with the secondary campus, the athletic facilities at the Armory, the creation of an aquatic center. And this would be a pedestrian circulation path, and there'll be a vehicular circulation path that's inside that, so that could be a secondary drop-off and pickup area. Then we have renovating the old St. Francis building, because that needs renovation, as well as the St. Clair building. Improvements and expansion of the chapel. We heard a lot about Sarah Court and the desire to be able to hold mass there, yet the issue with that was the heat, and so adding some flexible shaped structures would
So there's a couple things.
It went very quickly.
Next two, so talk about the aquatic center.
This portion of the Armory would be considered to be a support space for the aquatic center. The current maintenance building, well, it would be anticipated to be converted to a fitness center. So if you can envision fitness equipment in this building, with roll-up doors, full-looking pool, a little aquatic center, could be a very, very exciting space. And that would free up the current fitness center for a yoga studio. Then the current library could be relocated, and that would allow the creation of a black box theater within the Arts Theater complex building. So that is option one.
And then full track.
Oh, great. And soccer field. And parking would, would be added beneath the new academic building?
Underground parking, eighty spaces. This option has six-hundred-and-eight parking spaces?
We have around seven-hundred.
This option does not have a softball field.
But there are field options that do, and this is...
And bear in mind too, that in watching these three options, not everything in one option has to say there's potential mix and match.
What size is the pool? Is it twenty-five yard or fifty meter?
I'm sorry?
The size of the pool.
The size of the pool was twenty-five.
Okay. And what are the renovations for the St. Francis building?
Well, they were anticipating that it needs physical update, but there's also in that...